Yep, yep, yep.
Can we turn?
Yes, we'll go right ahead.
Can we try to turn it down a little bit?
Good evening, welcome to the City of Platingwood, Thursday, October 13th, 2022. We have the select here in your tonight. Before we start, we have a hybrid meeting. We have one member, Mr. Pritchard, who is zooming in for us. I have to read this statement. The City of Platingwood is committed to provide an environment of respect during meetings. We ask our members to interact and provide an interview with their instant disagreements. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel level and respected. We ask all community members and all who participate to commit to these standards and to support and respect our community. We do have a close to the general assembly center session, if that's okay. We need to take a roll call, so all in favor?
All in favor, Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Bornstein?
Yes.
Ms. Burbank?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor?
Great, okay. This can be settled here, public to the sky. At 6:30 tonight, we have continued public hearing. It is the site planning district to deal with special permits for multi-family building in the village center and the neighborhood district. Anyway, this is, anyway, this discussion is, is, yeah, G E G, G W B, and stormwater permit setting. Good evening, I know about two minutes ahead of you, so, uh, how are you tonight?
Great, thank you.
Right, can you just introduce yourself?
So Walter Solomon, Director Counsel for the applicant with me, Frank Paul at the applicant, and our support personnel from the Kenzie Engineering, and our architect, Phil Tivo. So, we've had an opportunity to receive a draft decision. We've also been working on a development agreement with CIO and CIO's council on the town. The worst of last may change this evening, but in principle, we have a deal. It should be executed, if not by tomorrow, then by the end of next week. So, I'm not sure exactly what format the board wanted to take. I know that we have four waivers to discuss, and we have four of those. We also have the project team here, if they want to go over. Review engineer had a final report to discuss as well.
Okay, the review engineer has a final report to discuss, and so I would recommend, let's go to that and, and start there. Just you?
Sure, I'm here. Yep, so basically, I would say that, you know, there's a few things that I recommend still be conditioned. There's a lot of decisions that the board has to make, and I can sort of, you know, run through those things quick. It didn't change much from last time. A few things got completed, so they come off the list, but we're still talking about, they need the special permits under sections 460 and 470 by the zoning board, that's Saltmarsh and the flood, tideland district and the floodplain watershed district. They did modify the level spreaders and the outlets to provide a little more protection and dissipation at the top of the bank of the river. So that's been taken care of. Still have the condition recommended about soil testing at the location of pervious pavers. I don't think that they have any issue with that. There was a condition for final building plans to include calculations and sizing for gutters and downspoats to make sure it takes the water properly. There's a condition recommended relative to contact party for construction. That's not known yet because they haven't picked a contractor. And then another condition is that they replace the, if, if there's a coastal storm, I shouldn't say if, I should say when there's a coastal storm that floods the rain garden, then that media probably should be replaced because it's a growing media and salt water trapped in there isn't going to help it. I think the rest of the things that I have on my list are generally things that the board has to review and consider, including work in the Water Resources Protection District. I know we've talked about this several times. The board need, has talked about it quite a bit, and they need to, I guess, make a final vote in bindings on that. There's space in, I think everybody's talked about the handicap space in the front. That needs a special permit. The board should review the landscape plan screening, those types of things. That should have your input. I defer some of the traffic things to Van Assen Associates. I know they have reviewed the parking garage, and it seems like they're satisfied with the design at this point. They've modified the loading zone to have more room for backing out and turning around. So that looks like that was satisfied as well. And other than that, I think there's, you know, you have to review low-impact design standards. You have to review the amenity space. They did provide all the required street trees in the latest plan. And other than that, I think there's just some determinations on, you know, what would be required relative to the TSS removal, critical areas. I think it's okay, they have a rain garden in the selfish area, even though DEP says that's probably not what you want to do. There's not a lot of options here, and it's certainly considerably better than what's there now, which is essentially like a paved scupper from the pavement directly into the river. So, that's pretty much all I have, but it should be at this point because we've been looking at it for a while, and none of these, I think, are very new. So, if you have any questions, I'm here.
All right, so let me just quickly summarize some of John's issues. Saltmarsh and floodplain, there's a finding in the, in the draft decision that we won't review tonight, but there's a finding there, and you're also be covered under your, you will require all of the, all permits be obtained prior to construction. So that's covered. The next conditions he recommended under stormwater management are all conditions that are incorporated in the draft decision. The Water Resource Protection District, we will get to that in a minute. Parking requirements, Vanessa's applying that everything is satisfied. Low impact, we'll get to that in a minute. Amenity will get to that, and everything else is relatively handled. So, I've, I've given you a list, and what I see as the major issues based on John's report and, and going writing a draft decision. The first one is flood flow panels. It didn't appear that the architecturals and site plans address that matter. So I think the best way to do this is to go one by one and let the applicant address these things as we go, as we go through the list.
Well, I'm sorry, Karen, I didn't hear, what list are you looking at here?
The one I sent you this morning.
The summary of issues list?
The summary of issues list.
Okay, so what, what issue is this in particular, then? I missed that.
Number one, flood flow panels, architectural and site plans.
This is, this is Karen's, not John's.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm, I'm on the wrong sheet of music, that's all. My apologies.
It's also on, it's on John's list, and so I put it on my list, and I-
Okay.
All right, so-
No worries.
Okay, so if the applicant would address the flood flow panels?
Yes, Phil Tivo or Phil Tivo architect. These are flood vents?
We go. We go, I'll have to, I'll have to get it to a map.
Steve, we have a handout which we will send to you tonight, okay?
Okay, can't just hand it up to me?
So I realized that the, the civil drawings call out for a 13-foot-by-two-foot opening in the foundation. That essentially was put, to my understanding, is more of a placeholder for the amount of area required for penetrations through the foundation of the play. So, my intent is to specify this particular item called a storm vent in a multiple fashion. So, you see in some of the, the listings, you see a single one. The singles are 16 inches by eight inches, so the size of essentially a concrete block. I intend to have four of them ganged together, so it's going to be two over two. That would be a 16 by 16 area. And I need five of those across the, across the foundation, essentially to provide an even flow of water in and out, so we don't have essentially hydrostatic pressures in one area. So, across the back, across that hundred-foot back, there'll be five of these that measure 16 inches by 16 inches. These will be located a foot above grid.
Is this essentially a, a washout panel of some kind?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
So if the water comes in the garage and starts to fill up, then it goes out these panels?
It allows for that free flow of water, that's correct.
But it can also come in through panels?
It, it, yes. So as the, the water levels rise, there's, there's essentially like a float system in them, that when the water gets above that level, they actually open up.
What, how high above the garage bays floor are these?
So, these at the highest point will be located two feet above.
So you're, you're assuming maximum flooding of two feet inside the garage area?
There, there would be a flooding of two feet in the garage because the, the opening of the garage door is at elevation 11. These would be placed at elevation 13. So the water would be coming in automatically. And so when the water gets much higher than that, so these will allow essentially a more even flow of water into, into the basement area rather than all gushing in through the garage door.
Steve, I just sent you an email, I'm trying to take a picture, yes, so if you check your email, you might be able to see a cloud lead back, okay?
Yep, yeah, I think I, I think I've seen him before.
Yeah, these meet the regulations of FEMA and stormwater requirement of FEMA.
Is there a garage door on this, on the garage?
There is a garage door.
Yeah, there is.
So the garage door itself will also have similar panics to match the garage door. I, the intent is to get them in a powder-coated finish, a gray, so it'll, it'll match. Foundation events will kind of blend up.
Will there be some type of pump system as well, like a sun pump, to help get this water out? Besides allowing it to flow out in and out?
There, there hasn't been one at the moment. There certainly could be an area that if we needed one, we could put one. It's, it's a matter of, there's really no area for it to discharge.
What's the route of the water leaving the garage, like in a, if there, if there was a flood and again, like the two, you know, these vents would be activated, what would the, as soon as the inundation event was over, what would be the natural path of the water out of the garage, itself?
It would typically sheet flow towards the door.
But is there, so is the door, is the driveway going into the garage, is there a slope on that, or is that flat, so naturally, the water would naturally make its way out of the garage? Again, that's just the question. How's the water going to leave when, when everything walls in there?
I, I would suggest for them to activate for two feet above, maybe. So, the water would be saturated above. So, we're looking at discharge, it would be above. But we've already created natural, we're not that high. Basically, we'd be a flood.
Yeah.
Right, and as flood goes down, you'll be, once you bring it down below a foot, or whatever it is, these things close. Is that right?
The water is still contained within the garage.
There would still, well, there would still be flow through the garage door.
So, then what's the flow out, like what's the path out? Like, is there, I mean, you know, like-
Does somebody come and sweep like, oh, she's stepping over the ramp, for you?
Well, I suppose after it receives back down below the grade around the building, then it would be a matter of cleaning it up.
Okay, that's what I think you want to know, that's, that's some pump or something.
Well, yeah, no, not necessarily, because like when it does receive below, down below the grade, like the concrete garage itself is a bucket. And the water is contained within the bucket. Once it, once it goes up over the rim through the vents, so, but I'm asking is like-
Right, but the threshold of the garage doors is, is at, is the lowest point.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Like, essentially, if it's in residual water, probably you can't take the S U O to sweep it all down.
So it goes back up that way.
Okay, okay, Mike. Steve, any, any more questions?
Nope, seems like a reasonable solution.
Okay, then? involve anything else?
All right, so then, is it reasonable to assume that another condition needs to be added, say revised plans need to be submitted prior to endorsement for flood, for the flood flow panels, both the architectural site and the O and M has to be revised to figure out how the water goes away?
I would support that, as would I. Shall we take a vote on that, watching above? Vote or just agree?
Well, just, just an agree.
Yeah, I think you just added to your list of things to add, right?
Right, so, right, that's making a list of things to add, so that'll be, that'll be added to the draft conditions. All right, so the next item, item two on the issues for seven new driftways is redevelopment, recharge, TSS removal. So, last time, majority of the members agreed that this was a redevelopment, and therefore, it doesn't 100% need recharge. But they have tried to give some recharge by just the stone of the level spreaders. And you have the rain garden too, which is going to, you know, give you some recharge and some TSS removal. And so there are findings of fact in the draft decision that says this is our redevelopment project and that they tried to maximize recharge in the Zone A as much as feasible. Is everybody in agreement on that?
I can reiterate that. Any other questions about that?
Well, we, it, it's also with respect to redevelopment, there's, there's less impervious surface here too, isn't there?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
John, did you want to add anything?
No, I think that all the discussion is pretty much consistent. So they, they reduced the impervious area fairly substantially, which by itself promotes recharge. They do have pervious pave, pavers and a pervious patio, which promotes recharge. And they have the, the level spreaders, you know, they'll hold, they'll hold a little bit of water, which will soak into the ground. It's not a huge amount, but yeah, little, in a lot of little tiny storms, most of it'll soak in. So, I don't think there's a lot more you can do. I mean, there- I would just, yeah, I would just list all of those items as part of the finding of fact, right?
I will double check that, but I think I did.
I think you were here.
I think I did, but I will double, I will double check the findings of fact.
Sounds good. I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
All right, number three, public amenities space. 20% public amenities space is required. They submitted a plan to clarify the outdoor amenities spaces, and they're showing that they have 24.9% common yard and garden, and common yard and garden. In that common yard and garden is a patio area. I guess the question becomes, is this sufficient? Do you want to condition that they need to provide benches for the patio?
Yes.
How big, we, we had a layout of this, how big is the patio?
20 by 20.
450.
So is everybody okay on conditioning benches? How many benches do you want? Is 450, it's 20 by 20?
20 by 20.
Homeowners, two, huh? I would put it, I think that's just, it's small, it's a size of my normal. It's small.
I, I'm on, let, let that.
Yeah, I mean, I just made a, I'm just designing it.
Pick a bench, maybe I'd rather do a pick and, I don't, I don't want to stretch, so.
You can't have current instructions there because of, but they'll be part of it, we're committing out seasons.
Yeah, or you just, I mean, I don't know, that's a, that's conservation.
Association would manage them and then we'll put them out.
What's the redevelopment? Would you like to see something here? These are we?
I'm just, I'm just letting you know that 50 Country Way during COVID, it became apparent that some type of outdoor, outdoor benches should, should, should have been provided. And they did, the homeowners association did end up providing them, you know, for relief of the inhabitants. So. All right, so the next, the next item is waivers. Four, four waivers are requested. Relief from section 520.6, number 34 and number 35 is not in the jurisdiction of the planning board. That's the jurisdiction of the Z D A. They have more than, more than 15% impervious, et cetera. So that, they'll have to go to the Z D A for. Do you know when you're on the street with the Z D A?
No, we expect to file next week.
So, the first waiver, waiver is requested from 750.5A, 3B, building setback and stepback standards to allow a 39-feet, 11-and-a-half-inch-high building within 25 to 50 feet of the front property line, where 35 feet is allowed as it is in the front face of the building that exceeds the requirement. That's, that's the waiver. If you'd like the architect to explain it, I think that would probably be a good idea before you. I would recommend voting tonight on the waivers. So it'll be less, it'll be less when we get to a draft decision.
Of the in the front elevation, the two pediments, because they're in the same plane as, as-
Steve, can you hear this okay?
Yeah, go ahead. Can't see it, but I can hear it.
So the two front pediments facing new driftway are in the same plane as, as the front walls. And so they naturally extend higher as they, essentially the roofs are triangulating. The slope groups are meeting the requirements further back. This was mentioned to the Architectural Act, Architectural Review Board, and they, they thought that it was not detrimental with what the building was showing. So, they, they were in favor of a waiver. I, I don't know if that ever made it back, but they were in favor of the building, they gave them approval. So, to give you an idea, you can you may be able to see it better from the rendering where these two pediments, about at the halfway point, we're, we're, that's where we're not meeting the requirement.
A little more than 40 feet of that. Okay. Now, we've had a lot of discussion on this test. So we'll let approve or not approve as we go through. Right, okay? So, is there any discussion about this waiver? Mr. Pritchard?
No, I think it's fine with me.
Yeah, awesome, Ben?
I guess my only question is, I mean, I know there was like, this is, this bio is new, and it's kind of new for everyone going through it, but I, I guess I'm just curious as to why we weren't able to hit that mark, I guess.
Well, we, essentially we could by removing the pediments, but then that takes away some of the architectural features in the building.
Right.
And the Architectural Review Board thought it was more beneficial to have that sort of, that facade facing new driftway than rather than just having a, a big roof.
Sure.
Doesn't it have something to do with the windows as well, the type of window, I thought?
They, they did like the, the large half around the windows. They, they thought that the penetrations and where they were placed, and that was all part of the measure.
Okay. On a minor waiver. Well, and on a fine as well, so definitely we're
You're going to take a personal vote?
Want to take a vote, please?
On the, on the motion that we accept the waiver, through the layer from 750.5A, 0.3, 0. B, look, except that.
Got it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Bornstein?
Hi.
Ms. Burbank? Ms. Lewis? Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Thank you, the unanimous, all in favor?
All right, so the next waiver is requested from section 750.8D1 for no parking to be placed in the front build-to-zone, which will be located a minimum of five feet from the front facade of the building. One handicap-accessible parking space is located in the front yard. Handicap access, accessible spaces are supposed to be your closest spaces. So for the outside parking, they have the one handicap in the front area. There's also a handicap space in the garage underneath. Previously, you will find that this was an acceptable solution.
Mr. Pritchard?
I'm still of the same opinion. I think, I think it's a good thing to have the accessible space closest to the building there.
Jim?
I agree.
Ben?
Yeah, that's okay.
Rebecca? Okay, so we all agree that there is a waiver for the handicap?
I move to approve a waiver for section 5, 750.8, 0.1, for no parking, blah, blah, blah. The handicap space is to be left front.
Your second?
Second.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Bornstein?
Hi.
Ms. Burbank?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Yep.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
And Mr. McLean, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, you know.
Thank you.
All right, so I just want to point out that the rendering does not show handrails, but there will be handrails, okay? The third waiver is a waiver is requested from section 750.8D2 for a street screen to be required where private parking is visible from a public street or sidewalk, including a five-foot buffer area, which includes a wall under landscaping that provides a site impervious screen. There is not a site impervious screen for the handicap parking in the front yard. There is, there is screening on the main, on the other side where the main parking is, but just not for the one handicap spot. I mean, there's still the street trees, but, um-
Do we have any, sorry, this, I don't have my big seven, is there a landscape plan out here today? No, no, I want to say. Have original, I don't know. It's perfect, I'm sure. I guess my take is that I'm okay, I don't think I need to see a formal screen, site impervious screen, but maybe some level effort to extend the planting bed or soften the parking space there, so it's not just lawn right after the parking space, might be a good addition to the landscape plan. This car might be showing it's turf grass right after the parking. This car might be showing its turf grass right after the parking spot, right?
So you want, you would like additional landscaping added?
Which would be a fairly low level, but I'm, I'm fine waving a sight impermeable screen, which would mean fencing or bigger trees planted in a hedge row.
You just want a little more screening down here?
Yeah, just dress up the front, I think that would.
Well, particularly, particularly if you're gonna have a, a handrail there, right? It'd be nice to try to break that up a little bit.
They, they are showing in front of it. Okay. And that would be, on the, on the rendering is showing a similar approach in front of the concrete ramp.
Yeah.
To break up that mass. I guess my, my opinion would just be, which would be a fairly low level, I'd rather modify the bed so that kind of can, is continuous lawn and walkway and grass around that front parking space, so we kind of, it's not a sight impermeable screen, but it's some softening of.
Right, but it's, it's softening of the, right.
That's kind of my, if you get out some nice grasses and jump there.
Yeah, um, when you're in the parking spot and you exit your car, do you immediately step onto the pavement? Or is, are you going onto the grass?
Most handicaps, they have the strapping.
So there's the extra, are there the extra strapping, but the extra striding, which.
Oh, on the other side?
Yes, where does this go? Do they go right into the ramp or is it grassier?
Do we go to the sidewalk?
Do we go to the sidewalk, fine. That's all I want to know.
Any further discussion? Do you want to make a motion?
Um, approve the request to waive section seven fifty point eight, point D, point two, the street, street screen on a public street sidewalk, the handicap spot.
Your second?
Second.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear the motion. Did you, did you say there was gonna be a condition or something on the, for additional landscaping? Was that part of the motion?
There should be, yes, yes. There's, should be a condition for additional landscaping in front of the concrete ramp.
Okay, well, I'm okay with that addition of that condition. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. McLean?
Yes.
You know, the solid favor.
Thank you.
A waiver is requested from section seven fifty one point three E treatment of front yards for the front yard to include thirty-five percent impermeable services where twenty-five percent is allowed as there is a handicap accessible walkway and parking space in the front yard. This has to be a fairly lengthy handicap ramp to, to meet the ADA requirements and we do have a little bit of parking in the front yard on the other side.
Well, that follows the second waiver that we had, prior to the provision of this. So is there any discussion about this particular part of the waiver? Steve?
So I, I'm just, so right now, there's only twenty-five percent?
Yes.
No, there's thirty-five. Is this, I, I'm sorry, this is thirty-five percent impermeable where twenty-five percent is allowed, right?
Yes.
So we have an extra ten percent here.
Right.
And it's really, there's really nowhere to go with it though, right?
Right. Because the handicap accessibility that we worked.
Yeah, I, I think we want to, you know, they need to have a handicap accessible, so. I would be okay with it.
Move to approve the waiver for section seven five one point three point E treatment of front yards.
Your second?
Second.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Bornstein?
Yes.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. McLean?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous in favor.
So you got two waivers?
Alright, the next item is density bonus and traffic mitigation. We have conditioned seventy thousand dollars contribution requested through the density bonus for pair maintenance and driftway conservation park, which is identified in the two thousand and eighteen open space and recreation plan. The applicant had given you a letter to commit to sixty, but several board members told me they wanted it seventy. So that's the next discussion point.
Well, I was trying to, I came up with the seventy thousand dollar number based on seventy-five per unit. You wanted the gateway. I know it's, it's a little high, not as much as originally asked for, which was a hundred thousand. And then ten thousand dollars for the traffic mitigation. I think that this is fair, myself considering when really is being placed. Do we have any discussion for reward on this?
What, what was identified as what it would cost to repair the pier?
There hasn't been a cost estimate done.
So we don't really know how much of the repair this would cover?
Right, because it depends on the, depends on the status of the, the, the supports. But I mean, they believe it's, they believe that this and some other money that we're, we could potentially be getting would be capable of support of redoing the planking. They haven't put it out to, they haven't developed construction documents yet.
But we know that money can go toward and identify and approve projects.
We have an opinion from town council that money can go towards and identify use, yes. Ian?
If this is, if this will get a repair project done, then I would say I, it would be fine with me. If it's, if it's just a piece and there's no other dollars identified, it feels like it would just sit out there and we wouldn't get anything done.
Oh, I can tell you, it's been brought to the attention of the Conservation Commission that this really needs to be done, otherwise it may have to be closed.
Because it's a hazard.
And that, that, and it's a hazard, which would be, which would be a shame for the town, residents of Green Bush and, you know, the inhabitants of the town situated.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disputing that one bit. It would be a shame if we had this money and it wasn't, wasn't enough to get us over the hump to actually do something about it. That's, that was my point.
I think that there may be other options down the road for money because this is considered to be recreation. Right, so this is a good start toward rehabilitating an important recreational aspect of the town. So while the seventy thousand may not be totally and completely sufficient, there are other avenues for us to pursue in order to make this happen.
But we will also be getting additional money on our projects.
Yes, but there is another.
Yeah, we have another avenue.
We have another avenue.
So Ben?
I mean, I think it's fair. I don't have a standard procedure for determining
No.
contributions, because, you know. I was just trying to figure out, start dwelling in what that, that would be.
Seventy-five, I'm pretty sure that will ask me for.
They need a density bonus of four units, not, not counting the affordable units.
Yeah.
Right.
It is what it is. So in reality, it would be nine, so they're all four, so it's a good deal.
Rebecca? Well?
Yep.
Alright, so everyone's appears to be in agreement on that. The last major issue that I saw before we get into a draft decision, which won't be happening tonight, is affordability. We have been making some very good progress on affordability. There, like Attorney Sullivan said, we have been working towards a development agreement and all parties have been involved in the Development Agreement Act. We had a meeting yesterday with Attorney Sullivan and Mr. Paula and CIL Attorney, Town Council, Shari Patty and myself and Steve Otters from the Affordable Housing Trust. So everybody is trying to get this to come together. And Town Council is appying, she thinks we ought to have a signed development agreement prior to doing a vote. The impetus to get this done is next week, the Affordable Housing Trust is meeting and they hope to vote, you know, for the development agreement and to sell the land. So then that we would have something signed and then in two weeks, we would propose that we review the conditions and findings of fact for the project.
And then this might really start to go, so. Okay, I mean, this is, this is something new. Never done this before. But I think people need to understand, developers need to understand, this is not setting a precedent in any way, should it? This is not setting a precedent and the only question I would have Karen, will this, even though a group home needs to be confidential, will this appear on our portable list?
Alright, Devin? A group home is eligible for inclusion on the subsidized housing inventory. The hangup becomes, because we're not allowed to know that aspect of, of it. So thus, we've been trying to come up to have some agreement that the applicant, CIL, somebody has to give us some draft paperwork so we know that they're submitting it to the state. It also has to be licensed by the appropriate entity, whether that's DDS or DMR, I, I, we don't know at the moment. But something needs to be included either in the development agreement or in the conditions with some of that. And that's why we're just not a hundred percent ready tonight. But it's, we can't technically, our subsidized housing inventory right now says we have eighteen units of DDS group home. We don't know the, and it says location confidential. That's how it will always be. So we will never exactly know, but Town Council feels that by having the licensing and some type of modification in some of the conditions, it's basically, you know, ready, ready and it should be just, it's a matter of course.
Right, okay.
Because it is absolutely eligible for inclusion.
So we'd have twenty-three rather than just thirteen? But we wouldn't know where it was?
Yes. Yes. Okay, so that's, that's some of the fine points that we're, we're working out, right? And we did, we discussed that yesterday in the meeting.
I just need to clarify with the patient.
No, right.
And in hindsight, it was so easy to do, then we should have done it four or five months ago. I mean, just, you know, the, the hangup was that nobody was real sure that we were going to property. And when, when everybody finally got to the table, get it out, we had this solved. Unless it weren't, we all sorted something every single project.
I thank Karen for the, it was very good.
So, a question for you on this. Will we know by the time we take this up in two weeks that the, the land transfer has happened?
No, the land transfer won't happen within two weeks. The land transfer, as we discussed yesterday.
Well, the, the sale of land, I guess.
No, it won't happen, it won't happen till after, we'll have a development agreement. Then the sale is proposed to happen after the planning board approves the project and after the appeal period. I'll let Attorney Sullivan elaborate further.
Yeah, that, that's the way to work and then. The security for the town is, is no occupancy permit can issued for the driftway property until there's an occupancy permit for the other property and the home. And it al, it also is, we can't get an occupancy permit until it's been accepted by the state to be included on your SHI.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Ben? Rebecca?
Okay. Do you need to vote on this?
No, no, I don't think this would need to vote because I think that next time when we.
It'll be part of the.
It'll, it'll be part of the conditions.
Right.
You will have an executed copy, hopefully, of the development agreement before the next meeting so that, and he'll, we'll try to get you the, at least a meet, a draft meeting minutes from the Affordable Housing Trust so that you can see that everything is falling into, into line.
So we wanted this discussion so that when Affordable Housing meets on Wednesday, they know that we are on board with it. How do you want to open this? Yep. So this is a public meeting. Do we have anybody who'd like to opine?
If there's anyone online that would like to make any comments, that would be the time you can raise a hand. By the, on the bottom of your screen, if you're joining us by Zoom or put your camera on and wave at us, whatever you like. But now I get the time for public comment if there's anyone on, on high, uh, remote that would like to make comments. No comments?
Okay, Andy Wilson, Kevin, do you want to? So if anybody has any, I mean, a draft decision has been circulated. If anybody has any comments, you know, you can submit them individually to me and I will try to get them incorporated before the meeting on the twenty-seventh and then a document sent back out to everybody so that we're on the same page.
I'm able to accept the advocate's request to continue the public hearing for site and administrative review and special permit for multifamily building in the Village Center and Navalwood District, Rebus Gateway District, Rebus Gateway Business Sub District, VCM GDDG WV until October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM and to continue the time for action for filing with the town court until November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein? Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis? Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous in favor.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Meeting minutes for September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Bornstein?
Aye.
Ms. Burbine? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard? I don't think you were here for the twenty-second, Mr. Pritchard.
No, I wasn't.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, miss, thank you.
Okay, Bill?
I'm able to approve the requisition of seventy-seven dollars eighty-two cents to WP Mason for office supplies, two thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty cents to Chesta Consulting for period view services for sixty-one driftway, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents to Chesta Consulting for period view services for seventy-one driftway, or a hundred and thirty-five dollars to Chesta Consulting. or $135 to Chestahe Consulting for period view services at 3 Poplin Avenue, and for $350 to Merrill Corporation period view services at 20 Manville Road.
Ms. Leffler?
Yes.
Ms. Borstein?
Yes.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Unanimous solid favor, thank you.
So I think a little liaison stuff. So for conservation, the 20 Manville, they issued the order conditions. Price of this will be for the last year planned. Once they saw that, they, they approved the order conditions for 20 Manville. And toll run is also taken up for conservation. And Mr. Toll, the owner died, one of them died, so I guess that's sad to hear, but. Toll run's what's conservation fee for water reduction for wetland replication. It's $9,000 out of $120,000. Sound's still very dirty, they think replication is okay. The tier of conservation is worried about the verbal pool, therefore they do not cover it, they don't go around it at the, their speaking. But they did get their vote out of the way. And the zoning for all open bucket was continued to 11 Y. And it was interesting because there was no information sent to zoning for me the county engineer or the parent relationship. And the other thing interesting was they had complained that it was the first night of Yom Kippur. And they felt that they shouldn't, that it's reduced to durban since we don't have any meetings on Thanksgiving or Moon years or any Christian holidays. So, so on diversity, and that way you approach and did work for one board. So, does anybody else liaise on who should not go away?
They, they do have period new comments on the original set of plans.
Yeah, they have.
Right, no, no, no new plans, then.
So, I, um. Liaise on CPC, CPC? They went over the special town meeting and, and what happened there. And I get to get, we just, I have received a list of 15, 12 new application lists. And there was a bit of a discussion because one of the members of the board, the select board, really did not want to have CPC show up at special town meeting. It should all be in the spring. But as was pointed out by another member of the select board, because we, the process for these applications takes quite a bit of time, that actually splitting up the way we're doing it works perfectly. So that is going to be made. Oh, and traffic rules, border high Lincoln, this discussion about whether that should be one way or whatever. And then, um, Blue Hill Road, wants it 25 miles, the unit, the usual.
The only thing I want to ask is that if you liaise on with a committee, try to keep your ear to the ground, there's some stuff happening. That, you know, not everything is televised, so you hear through the COVID break, I don't remember if I told that.
They have to tell.
Yeah, they have to tell that there's stuff happening that we really do not want to be taking out of our way of. It, which eventually will probably come before us, but we'd like a little, a little heads up first. So Karen, we want to go first on Mr. Banks' issue, we want to.
Well, why don't we have Mr. Banks and say it's Karen? It's not a public, it's not a public meeting, so it's not public hearing, so. We don't have to stick to our scheduled times.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So, Mr. Banks installed patio in back of his yard and bought eight 15 carriage houses for Curtis Estates. And I just figured, we've been having a lot of correspondence back and forth, which I shared some of that with you. I just figured it was easier to have Mr. Banks come in and try to explain what he did and what he, where he wants to go and figure out what the board, what input the board wants.
Can you just stick your name in the address?
Yeah, sure, Harry Banks, 15 Carriage Road, away. And yeah, appreciate the time here, everybody. I don't know all the materials that you have, but basically, we did add a patio to our backyard. It's about 532 square feet. We are aware that there are permeability concerns in our neighborhood. And as such, did have the builder, had discussions with the builder about the best way to know about this. Our goal is to also make sure there's good water flow so that, you know, our house isn't negatively impacted and that the neighborhood properly runs. So the way it was designed was with crushed stone underneath the patio. And then approximately 10 inch height of the, of the crushed stone. And about a one inch base layer of concrete ceiling. So long story short, did try to, to make this as permeable as possible. If there's a question whether it is or isn't permeable, I don't really want to get into that. Ultimately, we did other things to negate that. We put both of our gutter drains underground. That's approximately 1,200 square feet of the back of our house on both, on both sides of the rear house, which is the bulk of the roof. And so by doing that, ultimately, we added a net 700 square feet of additional permeable layer through, through adding those gutters underground. We're putting those gutters in dry wells that are going to be 150 cubic feet, which is what we calculated the required allowance being, given the approximately 600 square feet on both sides. And the calculation, which I did submit here, about what that would require in terms of cubic feet to properly drain that roof run off. So that's really the gist of it. We also added crushed stone behind our house. I'm not sure if you have the overall drawing of the backyard itself and the house. But there are crushed stone, that are generator, and just other. Drawn out there, so that did help quite a bit, that's before the patio. That did help quite a bit with runoff, because we did actually get our excellent flooding as built. So we've been dealing with water issues in our house since we moved in, as well as landscape issues. I think that a few meetings ago, there were some things about, you know, pool and just generally the neighborhood. I'm sure everyone's aware of the neighborhood. No one has grass, it's kind of chaos in terms of everyone's landscape. And there's some danger for the children to, in a few different areas. So the patio is, that's kind of it on the patio. We believe we added 700 square feet of additional permeable space through the gutters. I believe there's some precedence at this meeting for that being the case as well. I'd also note that this is not a pool, it's a patio. So I do think there are different, you know, we talked about impermeability, there's probably different thresholds based on the structure that we're talking about, which does lead into my next point about landscaping as well. On the landscaping side, obviously, we're putting, so we, we are against the stormwater runoff area in the back lot. So there's a field that's the stormwater runoff area.
The, the big basin in the back.
Correct, thank you. I don't know, I'm not part of this industry. But what we want to do is separate ourselves a bit from that. And so there's a huge, there's a very steep pitch in our backyard from our house to that stormwater, to that runoff area. And we would like to raise the backyard a bit so that we can still have drainage. It's still going to be a large down slope, but it's basically unusable. The rain actually flows through very aggressively because of how steep it is. We are going to add trees along the backside, which I think generally promote positive water flow and assist with the situation. We're also adding trees along the side, outside of the, you know, area that is dedicated as easement going down into there. And then there's just some bushes that we're adding to the side of the house.
Mr. Banks, when we move into your house, the bushes will, the left side of the house?
Correct, as you walk in our backyard, the left side, mostly for privacy from, from the road. And so what we also need to do is raise the ground a bit in order to make this an effective backyard. There was never even a loan that was in the plan to put into this development. I think you've heard that throughout, and that's the case in our house too. What we're going to do to create a border, our plan is to put approximately two feet tall landscape boulders on the back so that we can raise the ground appropriately and it doesn't just fall over into the waterways. So we need some sort of structure to do that.
Okay, so let's start right here.
Okay.
I don't think that boulders are, are going to meet what we consider impervious, correct?
Right, boulders, the boulders themselves are not impervious, I mean, they're, they're not, they are impervious, they are impervious. You can't, water can't, water can't go through a boulder.
So, can I speak, sorry. Yeah, Chris, Chris Harley, CJ McCarthy, we're going to work, Eric, this way. In situations like this, whether it's permeability or extra drainage, sometimes we use what we call landscape boulders. Approximately 18 inches to two feet high, right? That being said, they're not, it's not like a formal boulder wall where no water can actually run through, right? It's dry stacked, so as far as like locking water in, that certainly wouldn't be the case. Because like I said, they're regular pieces of rock that, like anything else, rainwater runs through the soil and just seep right through the, seep right through the actual structure. So there's a, you know, aesthetics is why we like to do it, but like I said, we've used this in other areas, other towns for this type of reason to say, hey, you know, we still don't be concerned by drainage issues, so this should continue water flow.
So, so, yes. Hold on, Karen, we want to adjust the situation more. Uh, the word ten, Rebecca?
So it's not actually, you're not bringing a big boulder and you're, you're making a dry, block wall?
Yes, correct.
Is that really what you're saying?
We call them landscape boulders because like I said, they're machine set, just put, like I said, two feet tall, 18 inches wide, single stacked next to each other. So it's, the point is, like I said, we're trying to bring these, this yard pitches like this, correct? We're trying to bring it up 18 to two feet, so I need something to retain it from that, that dirt flowing off into retention basin. So essentially, like I said, it's a retaining wall structure. But I don't want, don't take the, like, we're building this massive wall in our backyard like out of context, you know? Like, we're single stacking rocks in the dirt, which is, like I said, you can see developments that use like a similar process just in general for retention.
But you do know what our concern is about this whole area is the, is the amount of space that Charlie can leave. So you, you know that discussion that they have.
Sure.
Okay. Karen, you want something to say?
Oftentimes, walls are put up with those not necessarily interlocking.
Yeah.
They look like bricks.
Right.
Is that an option? And could you, if you did go forward with whether you are two foot by one, whatever it is, rocks, would there be some type of drainage or something?
Yeah, yeah. So with that, like you said, what we would do, I wouldn't recommend, one, it's aesthetics, but also for the function of what we're trying to do. We're trying to avoid having to put up like a block, a block retaining wall system in the backyard. I think that's, to be honest, in this case, less effective for drainage, I'd argue. So what we would do truly is this, we trench it out such, crush stone it like we would a patio, right? We can, I have no problem trenching out two feet deep if we want to have impermeability to the situation. Essentially, single stack these rocks so that any water flow, nothing would get, nothing should be getting held up. And there'll be trees in front of it. Yeah, and then, so that's the idea. The only reason we're doing that is to get our necessary height in order to help these guys kind of level off their backyard somewhat. And the idea on the inside of that wall, or towards the house, is the idea we don't want to have brass into a wall that just falls off. Would be planting all on the side, the inside of that wall. Trees, plants, still figuring out the design, but.
Karen? This is right, the property line of this, of the property is right, is the, is the basin property line. So you're, you're, the side slope of the basin is right there. At the side slope of the basin, the basin side slopes have not been maintained at all. The bottom of the basin's maintained, but the side slopes aren't maintained.
They're outlined by rocks.
Well, the, the rock part is the access in the back for the, for access for maintenance. The side slopes of the basin go up to basically the property.
Right, but there's rocks all along as the border of the basin. There's these rocks continuously around the entire thing.
Right, there is a half that we're talking about.
Okay.
So, I mean.
So when you're talking about a side slope, but basically it's really, we forget what that is.
Yeah, yeah, so we're trying to set some sort of border up that is permeable so that we're not.
But what Karen was telling me is that the side slope has to be at a certain pitch, pitch.
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, anything that, anything that's done on your property can't, can't ultimately undermine the pitch of the drainage basin. That's number one.
I think you have to watch out for any kind of concentrated flows that might come out of there and erode the slopes, right? That, that's probably the biggest issue, I would think.
Can I talk? So, so for me, as someone that does this type of work as well, I think the boulder wall is immaterial as to, you know, every surface. What I would be much more cognizant of, and I know you're retaining somewhat similar grades to what's existing, although at a higher elevation, that actual pitch of the grade is to be similar. What I would be incredibly mindful of is your cross pitch. Because we're only talking about the grade towards the basin, however, you're also going to be, like, really bringing that amount of material you're going to be having to deal with your, your, you know, unless you're going to keep it totally level, you're also going to have to figure out how you're feathering the gradient to the side of the property. And that's where I get nervous about how water's going to move and get channelized, particularly on a unstable site that's fresh topsoil or fill or whatever. So do we have any indication of how that water's going to move, like?
Plus, it should be, like I said, horizontal, like I didn't see your comment, vertically, we're going to keep that pitch down and slightly less. Horizontally, the pitch shouldn't change.
So it's going to be level or it's going to?
It's not, like I said, it'd be, it'd be level to what's there right now.
So Ben, if you look back at their house, you'd be block, like a gripping back, there would be some, um, that, that pitch going from maybe three feet up in your patio down, it is like a couple of side slopes, you know, see, it's.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah.
San Andreas mountains.
Yeah, I was bringing that up, you fill this and you put in your retainment, what's the drop on the top of this wall?
Yeah, right, yeah, two feet, it's 18 to two feet. And that's why we're aligning, the idea is, like I said, we're aligning the interior of that with plants, plants. With trees.
And they get quite a.
As it is now, it's just a huge pitch into this drainage system. So it's very dangerous as it is right now.
So they want to have trees and then they want to have a rug block in the back of the tree?
Maybe you got a little fence, some description to keep the rug rats in.
Electric fence.
Yeah, we have a good angle.
Only has a.
They have.
She's very smart, but her history, she's very nice.
So Karen? So my concern is, I don't know how much earth is coming in here. And, you know, landscaping for a single family home that involves the addition or removal of fewer than 100 cubic yards of slow material or alteration of less than two feet of elevation with maintenance of existing drainage characteristics is exempt from stormwater, but I don't know if you're.
It's not, it's not, we wouldn't be bringing in hundreds of.
Well, but I have no, I have no way of knowing that, we have, we have to try to know. So, I mean.
We can show you how much we acquire.
Yeah.
And there's less than.
You could ballpark it, you know, we haven't even talked about fail analysis, but.
No, but I don't, I mean, I'm concerned about how much cubic feet, cubic yards are being brought in. And it can't be more than two feet, so it needs to be less than two feet.
Sure, yeah, I think we, we do that, we're happy.
Ballpark probably 50, 60 yards.
It's not a huge area.
No, it's a small area. This is not a, this really is not a significant landscaping.
It's, it's a rather small backyard.
The entire lot, I think, is a third of an acre. The backyard is like a tenth of an acre.
For me, it's really like a meter. It's permeable, it's really like permeable.
It's about permeable, we're talking about, I mean, I understand that we want to do it, follow the right thing, but we're not talking about a huge investment.
It's pretty small, this property.
So, and I feel like we've added, again, we've also added over seven hundred feet permeability to within roofs. Putting that all in context, our goal as well is to have the appropriate water flow.
You know, here, here's my thing. Not casting a dispersion to find its subdivision. I think that Mr. Banks is doing very, very best of the plan with an incredibly difficult situation that to a certain extent is not worth. He was. And I think I applaud them for coming in and talking to us and being not frightened about it and are willing to work with us. Frankly, I don't have problems with what they want to do. And it's underneath, it's a stormwater permit, and he's doing the best he can.
No, it's not, it's not underneath the stormwater permit.
It is, it's, it doesn't require, it doesn't require, that's what I meant to say. Does not require a stormwater permit. They are keeping us well informed about what they're doing. And we have every right, once it's in place, to go up and take a look at it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So.
So I just ask for some type of proof of the cubic yardage and not two feet. Not less than two feet in the end because we have multiple other instances where people have put patios in and were trying, I wanna hold everybody to say, to the, to the same, same standard.
To the same standard, I understand.
And I agree, Mr. Banks is really trying to do a good job, and he's being very upfront. But we, we've discovered recently that it's not just two people who have put in additional patios, it's more like three or four people who put in patios. And so we're gonna be doing this.
Again and again and again.
Again and again and again.
Fourteen, fourteen, sixteen.
I just wanna make sure that everybody's on the same way, but, and I do not believe that he will be altering drainage characteristics. But, you know, other people, I just.
That's, I, I, just for myself, like I said, like, I run a professional business, so I don't know much, I've cut any corners in here.
So we would like to, 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 to give a, a proof to town plan of what you're bringing in, that's all we really require, to be a good job.
Can we still have a vote of approval subject to that proof?
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, I, I.
Subject to this, because there's facts, we, subject to that.
You're fine. And then, you know, landscape will help just with the plantage getting removed, because there's some plants that are better than ours. That's not my business, it's a, these guys are gonna talk about it.
Sure, yeah.
And, Mr. Cameron?
So I just have one other question. Did, um, did they plant the big pine tree back there today, or did, or did it's not?
It's, it's there, not planted.
It's not planted, so.
I don't believe so, but I.
So do you, do you care that it goes there or not?
No, no, there, next one.
Okay, I mean, because that, we, I, I was, we get, the buffer was planted in the back this week. And so I get, we get, ten trees were supposed to be in the buffer, and we got additional five. And I asked to go over a little bit so that it would help screen this property from the development, you know, Townsend Way and Townsend Probes Development. So I just, the landscapers are gonna be looking to get that in, I just wanted.
Yeah, that's why, appreciate it.
Okay.
That's why we're putting trees there anyways, so that one.
Just water, please.
Well, I'm interested since we are, it's just many, a, a pretty severe drainage problem.
Yeah.
Too much, too much.
Oh, just, you know, you step down.
I have to say, the patio's done great so far.
Okay, so then, he's okay to go ahead and do this. They're gonna just get back to me for cubic yardage, and it can't be more than two feet in elevation, otherwise there is need stormwater permit.
But, but tell all your neighbors to do the same.
Well, we have them to wait.
We will let them know.
We're, we're gonna be working with the neighbors, you know.
So just, you know, so it's, it's, it's requested that both you and, um.
Mr. McCarthy?
And, and Mr., uh, no, come in to, to do right, like, we really appreciate that. You know, it's a typical, you know, it's a typical, sorry, we, we do know that.
And you, you fully understand that this is not what this board wants to do. We don't, we have no interest in landscaping a single family lot, so. But this has been, this goes way back to the attorneys and the engineers that designed all that, because of how things were represented to people.
Okay.
Or not.
Yeah, yeah, we're just trying to, you know, and those.
We don't wanna be the one.
You don't want to be here, we don't want to be here.
We don't want to be here, I guess.
Deal.
Do you have your, your O and M, and do you have your homes? You've got all of that, all that's.
It's recorded, it's recorded now, so I was told that they were gonna give it to everybody. If you need their, the new recorded O and M, let, send me the email, I'll send it.
Yeah, I'll double check that.
I mean, that was just, they mistakenly, they never recorded it, it, it is recorded now.
All right, so is there formal updates happening, or did you go and leave this?
It'll be in the meeting, and you're good to go.
We will, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, so shall I put a schedule in, give everybody a schedule for the meetings for twenty-three?
Yes.
Wow.
Time flies when you're having fun. So town planner report, Six McDonald terraces under construction. They kind of, you put in a riprap slope there where there was supposed to be a graded slope. I kind of see that as a kind of a change in the plans that the planning board should have been notified about. I would see that probably as a modification, do you see that as a modification?
Yes.
Yeah, it sounds like a big time modification.
Okay.
Where, where, which part is?
The left, so if you're at the ice machine, look to the left.
It's kind of behind, um.
Slope towards Ascam, towards the rock.
It's kind of behind CP's, um, pit zone.
Oh, towards the, yeah.
So, but it's a, it's a significant slope.
Yeah.
So I will inform them that the board would like to see a modification. Forty-eight new Driftway, the gas station, I was given a temporary CO today. The striping in Driftway is done. We got a maintenance plan, we have, we have asphalt for it. Not everything is a hundred percent.
Everything is there.
So, that's why I've only signed up on a temporary, they still have to do benches. They still have the, the electric vehicle charging station, the, is in yet, but all the functioning, you know, all the stuff is in. There's, the bike racks aren't in, but everything that affects health, safety, and welfare is in. And so they were given until May fifteenth to have everything done because they neglected to plant the ten additional trees in the back, and now they can't get them until the springtime. And I would rather wait to get the, the red sceners until, until the springtime. But they will be diligently working on everything else that was identified. John, John Shasha has been out there several times.
So when are they actually planning on opening?
Um, they're probably open by now.
They're probably, yes?
Um, probably.
I didn't, yeah, I don't know, I didn't see them.
I mean, they got the CO around four o'clock today, they're probably open by four thirty.
And then, did they get the tanker in there already and load?
The tanks are filled with gas.
Oh, I guess they did then.
Oh, yeah, they did that last week.
You know, you have conditions related to that, he is fully aware of the conditions related to that. He told me the tanker didn't have a problem, but he told me, you know, the tanker currently go between six P M. and six A M. So, you know, tanker got in there, no problem. And it has to, you have to close down that piece, um, you can't do fill it while the tanker's there. You can't get it ready yet, so.
As long as, as long as they manage it.
Right, as long as they manage it. That doesn't mean that the lucky fin is open. That's, that's not, that's still, that's not, that didn't get a temporary CO.
How about the general store?
The, the gas station generals go together.
So the general store got a temporary?
Yes, because it's part of the, because it's in the station. Sidewalks at Curtis Estates are supposed to be done next week, they supposedly did compaction testing today. Street trees are in, the buffer in the back is in, you know, the ten, the ten pines in the back, and we added five more. And there, they all except for probably the one tree has been planted. You have, gonna have a potential appeal of your stormwater permit for twenty man hill. And right now, our consulting engineer is reviewing a request for a surety reduction for Toll Brothers. So th- these are things coming up, and so.
I don't know if you can speak to it yet, but the appeal, do you know what the grounds for that is?
No, I, we don't, we don't, they have until the seventeenth to file an appeal. And we've just been told that the man wants to file an appeal.
One of the others.
So, I don't know yet, but, you know, go find out. So that's where we kind of are at the moment, ready to start, um, very, very busy. And they, they are, um, um, been doing some work in the next probably week with trying to figure out where the trees are to go in the residential compound development, the additional trees in the buffer. And I think we're going to listen to another seminar this week on MBTA communities. So.
When is that?
Sharon and I said, it's Wednesday. It's to try, I mean, right now, the compliance model is not yet out. The compliance model isn't out till November first, so we can't even begin to input any of our data into this to try to figure out where we are. But I don't anticipate any articles on, we won't have any articles for a spring town meeting, maybe for a fall town meeting next year. And the A G. did approve our articles from the spring town meeting. So I'll, we'll be, we'll be updating the zoning bylaw for that, that new zoning.
Wasn't one of them around the?
The general bylaw was denied.
It was?
Yes.
The one about camping?
Yes.
On Cold Park Way?
Yes.
So that means you can't on Cold.
Not here, we don't hold on.
Well, at least the Attorney General had some sense.
I did not see the letter, it wasn't, I wasn't privy to the letter. I just know what we got approved, but I was verbally told that it didn't get approved.
I wonder why.
So, the, civil, civil rights and that type of stuff.
It was the gross abuse of power.
So that, that's where we are, and so.
Wait, so technically, you're allowed to camp on Cold Park Way?
No.
Oh, so what was the?
You just got me written permission before, before it was, the, the new bylaw made it, you had to have explicit.
The bylaws have allowed the police to come on private property to police that too. Which is outrageous.
It's a huge, it's a huge.
Was this, did this app, was this in the fall, or was this the spring?
Right, previously, it, it has to, it, it all has to go back to this crazy voting, how do you get a more, and how do you line up to get a more?
And there was like some R Vs, so.
It's okay.
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Do you want a motion, please?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein.
Hi.
Ms. Berman.
Hi.
Ms. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard.
Hi.
Thank you, and a sound favor.
Thank you. All right, be well, everybody, stay dry.
Thank you.
Thank you.